I'm ready.
Good evening, everyone. We'll call the meeting order. Joy, would you please call the roll?
Hamilton.
Yes.
Rasmussen.
Yes.
Revulinski.
Yes.
Flornoy.
Yes.
Ledger Kaelin.
Yes.
Hammuss.
Yes.
Hallie.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Counsel, any additions to this evening's agenda? All right, so we'll move on to our consent agenda before we consider that we will remove the resolution for promotion in the wastewater department that has not been completed, so we'll take that off. Your consent agenda will include approval of minutes from the June 8th meeting and also the June 17th special council meeting, resolution for promotion in the police department, a salary resolution for city employees, resolution for employment in parking recreation department, resolution for employment in the fire department, approval of our cigarette license permits, and approval of liquor licenses for Torino's Pizza and Steakhouse, Earth and Water LLC, Casey's General Store West, The Burning Oak, and claims in the amount of $494,208.47. So it's a good thing we're not taking all of these individually tonight. We do have quite a few on here. Are there any questions regarding those consent Not entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Move to approve.
Moved by Hammuss.
Second.
Second by Hamilton. Please call the roll.
Hammuss.
Yes.
Hamilton.
Yes.
Flornoy.
Yes.
Rasmussen.
Yes.
Ledger Kaelin.
Yes, abstain from June 17th minutes.
Hallie.
Yes.
Revulinski.
Yes, and also abstain from June 17th.
Thank you. This council will move on to our public forum and appearances. We have Jason Scott from McIlhany House regarding a parking issue. Jason, if you'd come to the podium, please.
Thank you, Mayor.
Yes, everyone has received your application, so I think we're familiar with the background, but give us some more specifics to have.
Okay. I've been caretaker at the McIlhany House for about two and a half years. My issue is with parking, mostly on Saturdays, with the farmer's market being on Grimes Avenue most of the time. Actually, this past Saturday, it was in Howard Park for the first time since they started this season. But with them taking up all of Grimes between Main and Court, that takes all of that parking away. When there's an event at the Arts and Convention Center, that takes up a lot of parking, auctions and things that go on there. I have groups that meet like on the same Saturday every month, and they are booked for the next year, year and a half. It's that group that I'm mostly concerned about. It's a group of ladies who may be senior age. I see they, this past time that they met, there were a couple of them that had to park clear down on the south side of the courthouse, and then they had to walk the whole block up to the McIlhany House. Like I say, it is only an issue on Saturdays. I don't find it an issue any other day. Vendors at the farmer's market, they park, they park all over, actually, but I noticed this past Saturday, they took up five of the 16 spots that are right south of the McIlhany House that are on Hempstead. And again, if they're in the road on Grimes, you know, I can get in and out of my driveway or the garage. There is some parking back there for three or four or five cars also, but again, there's no access when the market's in the road. So it's just, it's just an issue, and I'm requesting that I have the option to mark some of those spaces in that, in that east half of Hempstead between Main and Grimes.
How many spaces are you asking for here?
There are 16 spaces there in that east half.
And how would you mark them?
I would, I would have a sign of some kind. I thought about that. I noticed they have some signs at the courthouse. I don't know who's reserving those spaces. It just says, "Reserve parking." You know, I don't know if that's...
But you want to reserve all the time? I mean, I wouldn't want to, I wouldn't want to restrict other people at other times.
No, it would, no. I think it would, it would mostly be on Saturdays. I don't, I don't see any other day that it's a problem.
So is it temporary signage that you would need just for that particular day? And then how, how many spaces are you talking about as reserving for that day, or are you talking all 16?
I would like to have the option to hold all 16 of them. If, if it warrants, you know, if I have a large group, if I have a large group there on Saturday, you know, if I have 50, 60, 70 people there, which is about the maximum, I would like to have the option to hold them all.
Okay.
For guests of the McIlhany House.
So Jason, you know, as I was thinking about this also, because it is a temporary nature, and if you say it's going to be, say, how many Saturdays do you think?
I see it's, it will always be one Saturday, May through October, and I would think the maximum would be three Saturdays, and that would be rare, I would think.
Per month, you're saying?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I think it really would be helpful, because, you know, it really is, parking is difficult. And I, I don't mean to say this, but he does have a lot of, you know, senior people who come and...
Thanking, yes.
Walking a long distance and carrying something. You really feel, feel sorry for them. I mean, we do need to, I think, if it's only for these special times, that I think it really is something that would be a benefit.
I think that would be fine, but I think, again, how to restrict it just for those times. In other words, we don't want to say every Saturday morning, because then even one Saturday out of the month, they're not being used, and that would be a waste, because they could definitely, this primes parking spot.
Sure.
So if we can figure out some system...
The other thing, too, is Jason, do you feel you could manage it if we did it similar to the way that we do a street closing, where there are barricades involved, and you manage the barricades to let people in as they park? They have to be there.
That one's pretty tough. It ties up our forces, bringing barricades, dropping them off, picking them back up.
It would almost have to be, you have some sign that goes on each spot that says, "Reserved for parking today," between now and noon or something.
Yes, sir, I realize that would have to have. If you give me the option to have all 16 spaces, I, I may need 16 signs.
Yeah, that's another thing, too, is aesthetically, I don't know whether we want 16 signs stuck in the ground.
Well, the portable.
Well, but he'd have to put them out.
Yeah, it would only be on one day. I'd go out, I'd go out late in the evening on Friday and put them up early Saturday morning, and then I'd have them down by the end of the day on Saturday.
Well, you could, you could make up like a wheeled sign for the temporary stop signs in front of the school, except on that wheeled sign says, "Parking closed," or "Parking for McIlhany House event only."
Yeah, yeah, I like that idea.
Something like that. You could roll it out at mid-block point.
Michelle Jello mold.
Anyway, something, something that could roll out temporary like that. People can still get around to get through, because it is a through street, one-way traffic.
You've got too many Tootsie Cops.
So how?
I suppose, I suppose, I suppose another option would be, I could build a few barricades you know, out of like a sawhorse deal pike you have at the city, they close the streets with. I could build a few of those and just set them, just set a few of those around if I don't...
Then how do you open it up? It's a thing. I mean, you have to actually be there physically.
I'd set them, I'd set them in front of the parking spaces themselves.
Let's let you figure that part out, but let's determine what discretion we're going to give you as to when they're utilized.
I think you just need four signs to put down, reserve between signs, put one at each end, and you're done.
There you go. I hadn't even thought of that.
Take them down when you're finished.
Okay, but how do we want to, how do we want to articulate the discretion for their use?
Saturday mornings, right?
Saturday.
I mean, my feeling is it doesn't have to be, doesn't have to be limited to Saturday. Yeah, it doesn't, I think we can give, I don't mind giving McIlhany House priority for that parking space when you need it on isolated occasions.
Yes.
If it gets out of control, we can come, you know, we can, maybe we should kind of, I mean, we can revisit it. But, and so I don't mind wording it such to say that, you know, that those parking spaces can be designated for your patrons based on...
Would you want it to be all 16 spaces, the entire, the entire half-block?
For, for any event. That would, that would be the easiest way to manage it, because like I said, you could roll a sign out at mid-block point saying, "Parking for McIlhany House event," and you don't have to put on from time to time when the sign rolls away, it's open. When it's out there, they're restricted to what's going on in the McIlhany House. And it's pretty clear that that designation would only be for that half-block, so that if, if there is some sort of enforcement that needs to be put into place, say, somebody's got a trailer that they pulled in there, because they didn't have somewhere long enough to park it up for farmer's market, and they were leaving it there so they could shuttle stuff back and forth, they would know that they would have to move it at that point in time. And if the vehicle was left unattended for an extended period of time, then you can call the police department. They can come out, run the plate, find out who the owner is, ask them to move it, you know, that kind of thing.
Again, but I think there's kind of two things I think the mayor's pointing out. One is, what are the, how are we going to restrict the timings? The other is the actual, physically, how it's going to happen. I think, I would rather see, you know, once you figure out how you would like to do it, that you actually check with maybe Public Safety or somebody, and then just make sure that we all sign off on it. I mean, if you just put a sign in the middle of the block saying, "This is restricted," I mean, I would think the whole, which part of the block is, I don't know.
It's a one-way street. You're going to drive up to the sign, John. It's not a two-way street.
From here on, or from before here? In other words, it might be confusing. I think it should be at least reviewed how it's done, so that, so that it's...
From here to corner.
Which corner?
The corner on, of course.
Well, you can say that with any of the signs in our city that says, "From here to corner." Which corner? So how does anybody follow those types of...
Well, the one...
Why don't we refer this to committee and let them come back with...
Yeah, that sounds good.
Definitely.
We won't figure it out here.
Okay.
Waste our time.
We definitely approve of the need.
I don't think anyone's arguing with the, with the general concept, but just how we're going to word the, how it'll be, the permission will be worded, like as far as the timings or, you know, that will, you can have any time you want.
What months do you feel that they're...
I only think it's a need, I only, I only think it's a need, Mayor, May through October.
Okay.
And just on Saturday mornings?
And mostly, yes, almost always just on Saturday morning. I don't know. I've never had the need for Sunday.
Okay. Okay, so, so then again, we're just, the council, you're going to be saying that you will leave it to the discretion of management of McIlhany House to determine whether there is a need on a particular Saturday between May and October, but they have, they have discretion.
Excuse me, I wouldn't abuse it.
Yeah.
If I didn't, if I didn't need the spaces, you know, I wouldn't, I wouldn't mark them. If I didn't need all 16 spaces, you know, I would only, I would only take those north six or seven or whatever it is.
Right.
Yep, great.
Okay, so entertain a motion then to grant that permission to...
So moved, that we do approve.
Okay. Thanks, Martha.
Second.
Second by Flornoy. And just Doug also, just as, as kind of amendment, he did recommend that it is, the method for, for determining the, how the street is blocked, be reviewed by the Public Safety Committee. So if you would come up with something, yes.
Yeah, you should come up with whether you're going to do Darren's idea or something else. Once you, once you figure out how you'd like to do it, then just make a set of time with Public Safety, and they'll review it, make sure that...
And Councilor Hammuss is the chair of that, so if you would get with him when you determine how you'd like to do that for their approval.
Okay.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same sign.
So just so we're clear, it approved that, and then Public Safety is going to approve his signage.
The method for, yeah.
Yeah, got it.
I understand.
Okay, thanks so much.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Jason.
This council will move on to our action items and ordinances. The first on your agenda is the approval of the strategic plan, and Mike, I thought we, I know we hoped to have something to review for approval tonight. We, you've received something, but...
Yes, thank you, Mayor. We hoped to have the plan last week for approval tonight. However, we just received it today, so I'd like to take a week or two and send it to council for editorial review prior to the approval. So I wish of the council, we would postpone this to our first meeting in July.
Yeah, that sounds, that sounds fine. We look forward to reviewing that and going over that with, with the public also, in terms of what we have adopted for our strategic planning for the year. It's a great process. We'll move then on to the next action item, which is to set a public hearing for the annexation of property along 227th Street. This is a property that was purchased by the Fairfield Economic Development Association. The intention is to annex it into the city, and as you'll see, the next item would be to rezone as well. So we will set a public hearing for July 13th at our next council meeting for this public hearing on annexation.
So moved.
Moved by Revulinski, second by Flornoy. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same sign?
I abstain based on the adjacent property owned by the DOT.
Thank you, Darren. Next action item would be to set a public hearing for the rezoning of the property. And again, with successful annexation, everything would come in as an R1. The request would be to rezone to an M2, so we'll set that public hearing also for July 13th.
So moved.
Moved by Revulinski, second by Flornoy. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same sign?
And again, I will abstain.
Thank you. Next council, we've to set a public hearing for annexation of property along Libertyville Road. Similar purpose, then again, we will be just setting a public hearing, so we'd entertain a motion to set July 13, 7:00 PM.
Moved to approve.
Second.
Moved by Ledger Kaelin, second by Flornoy. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same sign? Thank you. And also, the property would simultaneously be requesting rezoning along Libertyville Road. We'll set that for July 13, 7:00 PM.
Moved to approve.
Moved by Ledger Kaelin.
Second.
Second by Flornoy. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same sign? Thank you. Next council, we have approval of plans and specifications for a contract for Third Street reconstruction and paving. Melanie, do you have some background you can give the council on the project?
This project is, it's along two blocks, or about 1,100 lineal feet of residential pavement on Third Street between Iowa and Harrison. There is a sanitary sewer project on that street that's finishing up. It's later on your agenda item, and, and so instead of patching it, the two departments talked and planned to reconstruct that portion of the street, or of, of Third. We are, the project includes the pavement as well as granular base and subdrain. We're doing alternate bids for the concrete and asphalt, with the engineer's estimate for the concrete being $219,500, and the estimate for the asphalt being $282,000, $282,000. The bids are going to be received July 8 at 11:00 AM, to be ready for consideration at your next council meeting. The completion date is set at October 30th of 2015.
Okay.
So this comes out of which, which budget, and the water department's paying for this?
No, it'd be road use.
Road use taxes.
How wide is this street?
We decided to redude it because of the water.
Because of the sewer.
Sewer, I mean.
There is a portion, the sewer department was going to pay for patching it, about $44,000. So $44,000 is going to come out of the sewer as their contribution for this project. Jessica, to your question, it's currently 25, and we'll put it back at 26. Back and curb, back and curb.
Any other questions for Melanie? Thank you. This is a public hearing, so we'll open the public hearing at this time and ask if there are any comments on the plans and specifications for the project. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing, ask for a motion to approve the plans, specifications prior to the bid opening.
Moved to approve.
Moved by Hamilton.
Second.
Second by Revulinski. Any discussion? Not all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same sign? Thank you. Next council, we have an action item regarding authorization of a floodplain permit. Melanie, if you could talk to us about that as well.
Okay. So technically, I'm here on behalf of the sewer department to request that the city allows the construction of the Step 1 sanitary sewer. Step 1 goes from the treatment plant to Lamson Woods, roughly Lamson Woods, of which about 200 feet of it falls within the city limits. A majority, not a majority, portions of the project are within the floodplain of Crow Creek, and as you see on the last page of your, of this attachment, the DNR has approved construction of the permit, or of this project within the floodplain, but asks that the city of Fairfield also give a permit for it to be constructed within the floodplain that is within the city limits. So you're, you're only approving the little portion next, at the corner of Mint and Fillmore.
So we're approving a permit for ourselves.
For our own project.
For our own project. Yes, it seems very ironic, but with floodplains and, and the oversight that the DNR has in it, it, sometimes projects that aren't related to the city fall in these, and they have to have a permit approval in order to work in it. And so it seems rather redundant, but it is a requirement by the law.
And I will say nothing, there is nothing going to be sticking above the ground when this project's complete. You know, the floodplain is more of an issue when there's a permanent structure. There are permanent structures here, but they're all 20 feet underground. Just letting you know that they, we don't have banholes sticking up above the ground in this area.
Yeah, Mike and I were talking about this. I think that's kind of the greater irony, that we have to approve something that is underground that carries water under a floodplain. So anyway.
Thank you.
It is something we have to do, so I would entertain a motion to approve.
I would move to approve.
Second.
Moved by Hamilton, second by Ledger Kaelin. Any discussion? Not all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same sign? Thanks. Next council, as Melanie mentioned, we have also the, the acceptance of the Third Street Sewer Project as final. Any comments on, on that, Melanie?
Wanted to mention that the bid amount on this project was roughly $121,000. The final amount that is going to be paid to cross iron is $83,160.76. So that difference is what's the sewer department's contribution to the...
Towards the paving.
Paving project. Other than that, project went well in that we would request a motion to accept that the project is final.
Moved to approve.
Moved by Ledger Kaelin to approve the project as final.
Second.
Second by Revulinski. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same sign? Thank you. This council, we have the second reading of the amendment to Fire and Burning Ordinance. This is a public hearing, so I will declare the public hearing open at this time. Ask if there's any public comment. Not seeing any. We'll close the public hearing. Council, any feedback that you've gotten since the first reading? None? Okay. Entertain a motion to pass it from the second to the third reading.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Hammuss, second by Ledger Kaelin. Discussion? Please call the roll.
Hammuss.
Yes.
Ledger Kaelin.
Yes.
Revulinski.
Yes.
Hamilton.
Yes.
Hallie.
Yes.
Flornoy.
Yes.
Rasmussen.
Yes.
Thank you. Counsel, just make note that I got down to the Fair Fest Festival over the weekend on all three days. Everything seemed to be running pretty smoothly. It seems like this festival was really getting kind of a grounding, and that's really nice to see. Was, was not there on Saturday night when the, when the rains hit, but I guess good spirits all around. Everybody made the best of that, and Sunday turned out to be a nice day. So again, we had a successful event that I think brought a lot of good resources and attention to our community, so I want to congratulate everybody that participated in that, and thank all of our city departments that worked with Fair Fest on making this happen. Let's see, city attorney doesn't have a report, John, but I think it's worth mentioning that we did finally have a closing on Logan Apartment Building. We are no longer owners of that property. I know that there is one small hurdle in terms of the assignment of rents that will, will take place, but money was transferred, and it took a lot of diligence on your part. We thank you for that, but we're happy to have that, have that done. We'll move on then to committee and board reports, Public Safety and Transportation.
We did meet. I'm not going to read all the minutes to you, because they're in your agenda, so you can read them. But we discussed four items, animal pickup fee. There was a request to the city to reduce the reclamation fee from $50, then lower it down. Chief Thomas advised they needed that fee to maintain or to cover the expenses of the vet clinic, so we decided it was best to maintain the $50 reclamation fee. I had a request to lower the speed limit on Walton Road to 25 miles per hour because of safety concerns, people walking on the road. The committee felt it was, would not be prudent to do so, but I referred the person who requested that to the board of supervisors, since I believe they control that speed limit more than we do, anyway. We had alcohol server ordinance that we talked about. We suggested four changes. I've been in contact with Pat McAvan about the changes. He agreed to make those changes, and we'll meet again on that. We also discussed safety concerns at 9th and Burlington at the traffic lights with the new pool there and more children crossing the street. We wanted to get a longer walk time for people to cross the streets, so Darrell, I think, is taking care of that. But we made it a, when you push the button, you get 21 seconds now to cross East and West, and 18 to cross North and South. If you don't push the button, it remains the same time as it is now by the activation. We thought that was prudent to act on that right away, so we, as a committee, approved that motion for that change. So any discussion can be had here now, but it has been changed at this time, and that's it.
Great, thank you, Tony. Appreciate it. Ways and Means Committee.
Yes, Ways and Means Committee met just before this meeting tonight, and we were continuing to review the draft of the city of Fairfield planning, a financial policy manual that we're, that we're putting together. And we made a lot of progress on it. We're going to definitely finish it at our next meeting, which will be right before our next council meeting. But two things I will point out from it. You know, Mike's done really a lot, a good job with this. I'm really, really happy about this, and I think everyone's going to feel that way. There's a lot of prudent policies that we're putting together with this, and two things I would just point out, they're probably the most far-reaching. They're going to have an effect on the operation of our city, Billy. The one is maintaining positive cash balance reserves in our, in our general fund. This is something that we're almost being forced to by our, you know, by our grading agencies, by Moody's, to maintain a certain amount of working capital in our, in our general fund. And so we've set a goal of having at least 25% of our fund balance be, being reserved. And so that'll have all kinds of implications, because it may require tightening of the belt in some, some areas in order to be able to do that. Another thing is that we went over tonight, which I thought was a very good thing, is this cap, five-year capital improvement program that we do planning for, for capital improvements, and then we stick to that planning and make it, it'll put much more discipline in our spending if we do that. in our spending if we do that. So those are just two examples of some of the major policies in there we discussed tonight. We'll be presenting finished product in the coming weeks for the whole council review and, and for public discussion as well. Also, we considered, even without Adam, we considered the issue about expanding the Tiff District out, out, south of town, and specifically...
South Main.
South Main Tiff.
South Main Tiff.
For the Lincoln Street extension and bringing some Fida, property owned by Fida on 227th into the Tiff District in the event that the council would like to use Tiff as a tool to incite development, or incent development on, on 227th, as well as the construction of the extension of Lincoln Street to facilitate potential housing development further to the east.
So the committee felt that this was a valid plan and moved to recommend it to the council. Uh, I think the next step will be that we'll actually draw up a...
An amendment.
An amendment that would, that would come before the council for a vote at, at possibly our next council meeting or that future meeting. So that was our meeting.
Great, thank you, John. Counsel, a final item on our agenda is a project update. Let me ask Melanie Carlson. You all have a copy of the current projects and her report, quite a lot of information there. Do you have anything specific to report on, or just take any questions?
Um, because I received some concerns from Michael Haley about Highland, I wanted to, and some residents on Highland, I wanted to specifically point that out. That particular street does not have a rock subgrade because there is not room for storm sewer. That requires the contractor to make, have that dirt a lot more compact and a lot drier than what we would require, for example, on Third Street because it's going to have a rock subbase. The contractor has been out there several days, he, they've disped it up, I mean, literally with a farm plow, disped it up and recompacted it, and they've gotten very close to meeting the requirements, but before they can pour the concrete, it rains again. So there was some concern that the contractor was not moving, and...
Lot of concern.
I, I, it's completely valid concern, but I wish we could get more than four days in the extended forecast where they're not predicting rain. Basically, the contractor, he doesn't, they don't have a favorable enough forecast that they're not even moving in and trying to farm things up. Whether it's that magic number is a week or seven days, but we obviously need more time than what we've had the month of May and June of dry weather in order to get that done. So we do recognize that the contractor's not doing much, but until we stop the rain for an extended period of time, not much is going to happen.
There's a lot of dissatisfied people on Highland, believe me. The phone rings constantly. I can't get my car in the driveway. I've fallen in the mud, and they're very unhappy, very unhappy, I'm sorry to say. But they are, telling them about the weather, which I did. I said, you know, it's raining, and it's like, tell us about it, we know, but nothing's happening. It's like, oh.
Well, it sounds like it wouldn't be cost-effective for the contractor to just keep telling them back and...
You took our trees, now you tore up our street. What next?
Well, I think it's compounded because it has been torn up for so long, and we had those setbacks from last year, I understand, but I've, I've lived through that where I've had to park somewhere else and carry mud boots with me to cross the road to another street. We had one of those years, and it's frustrating, so we can, we'll do the best we can.
And, and we do keep, uh, touch base with the contractor on a weekly basis, and we don't feel like they're purposely dragging their feet that it is weather-related, so.
Okay, thanks, Melanie.
Unless there's any questions, I don't know.
Yeah, Melanie, do you, uh, do you feel the facade project is on schedule for getting to bid sometime before the end of the summer?
Um, I, we'll see how the discussions with each of the property owners go. If, if we can get them signed up within, you know, a few weeks of being presented with the final contract, that we're on schedule, but if, if it takes several back and forth for them to agree to the terms, then maybe we're a little, we're a little bit behind right now. Curtis Architecture is giving us, they're finalizing their numbers, their cost estimate goes as part of the agreement between the city and the property owner.
Right.
Because we're asking the property owners to down, give a down payment of 50% of that cost number. So that is right now what we're, well, should say 50% of their share of that cost number, but...
Right. Mike, any other comments?
Just that we've set up an escrow account with Morrissey Law, so the funds will come into the city. They'll replace an escrow, just insert a safe, safe holding of those funds.
Yep, right now, it is in Curtis Architecture's court. Mike and I met with John Morrissey and have tied up all of the ends regarding the, the contract between the city and the owners.
Okay, but the, in terms of the costs, the final costs, do you feel Curtis is a little delayed on those, or are we on schedule?
There's been several back and forths with the property owners fine-tuning what they want, I think.
With, but with just a few, or all?
Uh, with just a few.
Yeah.
Right, right, but those, they have taken quite a bit of effort, the ones that have, getting them to narrow in on what they want as a final project has, has been difficult with just a few.
Okay. All right, thanks, Melanie, that's all I had. Any other questions?
Couple items tonight, Mayor. Uh, we're at the point on the rec center where we're working on foundations on the west side of the city. So contingent found rain, we'll really start to see that, that building shall go up quickly in the next month, the two months, so that, that'll make a lot of transition. Second item is the Public Works Department will be picking up tree branches and limbs and that type of thing this Friday starting at 7:00 AM, so just wanted to make that public that we will be providing that service and picking those branches up as a result of the recent storm, so we'll do that Friday starting at 7:00 AM. One, one pass-through, Sid.
Great, and I don't know what it's doing outside right now, but if, hopefully, if there's any damages, we can add to it by Friday and not have to have a second one next week, but...
Right.
You'll let us know, Darrell, if that's the case, if people will have enough time to get some of that stuff out, so.
I had one thing.
Yes.
Uh, Fire Chief Scott Vaughn brought it to my attention a couple weeks ago that no one was organizing any events for the fireworks on the Fourth of July besides the fireworks, so he's, he's busy with fireworks, so I'm trying to organize some activities. Any vendors who are interested can pick up a form here at City Hall. We've got only a couple so far, but we'll have tours of the Bonnefield Cabin, trying to organize something at the volleyball court, trying to bring back some of the elements we had planned for last year when we got rained out for the 175th. But anybody who's interested in selling items, please contact either me or City Hall in the next week and a half.
And it will be celebrated on Saturday night, I presume?
Yep.
Okay.
Fourth of July itself.
Fourth of July.
So it's going to be a great fireworks show. We have all the fireworks we had purchased last year. We'll get them back and be the biggest fireworks show ever in Fairfield.
Okay, so I, I want to ask the question about what your rain date is.
No, there's not going to be rain.
Entertained a motion to adjourn.
I'm adjourned.
By Hamilton, second by Hammett, was that?
Yep.
Yeah, Hammett. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.